Please, please stand and join us with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do need to have, to modify the agenda. Deletion of Board Policy JHH, Underprivileged Children's Fund. We need to, administration has asked us to remove that from the consent agenda tonight. There've been some discussions with some of the volunteer groups involved and they're going to continue and the administration will bring that back to us in the future. My report. Not too much, other than to say the campaign for the Quality Schools for Kids has kicked off. There are buttons available for everyone to wear and...
That's for information.
For information, information only, because we have a campaign right here. But there are buttons and information available. And I would also challenge board members, if you get an envelope in the mail, to act on it so we can have 100% participation. Your report, Dr. Ritter.
I just want to mention a couple of things. First of all, health-wise, as far as flu season. I was visiting with Gene Grabo yesterday, I think it was, maybe the day before. And remarkable in the fact that our kids have been coming to school. We haven't had a whole lot of issues related to that. We think a lot of it has to do with the wellness, but also, I think, flu shots. And quite a few of them did receive flu shots, so I think it's been great that way. Other than that, I think we have plenty to talk about as far as programs, as far as ongoing systems review. So let's go there as soon as we can.
And we're not having any snow days?
Maybe Thursday.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Yeah.
Okay, Thursday. I'll put that down, Thursday.
Two information items and we're happy to hear our first internal audit report from internal auditor, Mr. Mueller. He's got a lot of information for us and I think we've been anxious to not only have you in the position for a long time, but have the position itself and have our first report. So I'll turn it straight over to you.
Great. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present this audit report to you. First of all, I do want to thank the district staff that helped me during this audit. You know, all you see is the audit report that I write and present to you, but it takes a lot of effort from staff that I speak with and they gather documents for me and that kind of thing. So I do want to be sure to thank them first. Also, as you know, in my role as internal auditor, I'm serving two functions overall. One is to serve as a watchdog for the board and for the public interest and also to serve to look for ways to improve operations. And I would hope that for almost every audit I do, it's going to contain elements of both of these. Tonight, since you already have received the written report through Board Docs and you've had a chance to go through all that, I'm not going to go over the recommendations in detail, but I will give you a brief overview of the audit results and I will answer your questions. As you can see, the title of this audit is Performance Audit of Bond Financing, Bond Projects and Long-Range Facilities Planning Activities. To give you some background, this audit is part of the 2013 Audit Work Plan. Most of the areas I looked at in this audit related directly to findings that the state auditor had and as such, I'm following up on those. Also, I did want to mention, this audit, although this is the first one I've completed, it's not the first one I started. And that's because back in mid-December, Dr. Ritter came to me and he thought that it would be a good idea to move this audit to the top of my priority list since these activities relate directly towards bond projects and bond issues. And I agreed with him that it would be a timely thing to do, so I moved it up to the top of my list. I'll move now on to the overall objectives and the ratings I gave each area. There were six overall objectives for this audit and they're listed for you right there. The first five relate directly to findings that the state auditor had and the sixth was an area that I added to the audit just because it related very well with the rest of the areas that I was already looking at. To give you an idea, two of the areas received the effective rating. Three out of the six, I gave the improvement needed rating. And one area I gave no rating, and I'll mention that briefly here. That's the objective five, to evaluate the effectiveness of the long-range facilities planning activities. Due to the long-time horizon that long-range planning has, I couldn't come up with any kind of objective way to measure this area, so I didn't give it a rating. I did look at it and I do write something up about it in the written report, but I couldn't give it any kind of fair rating. I will say that I do know that the district does have a long-range facilities planning committee and they have been meeting since January of 2012. I think it's important also to quickly go over the definitions of my rating system. That way, it gives some kind of perspective to what my ratings mean. I highlighted some of the key phrases and key words for each definition. For an area to receive the effective rating, the operational, financial, and compliance controls evaluated are adequate. Risks are being managed and objectives are being met. Any control deficiencies noted are minor. For an area to receive the improvement needed rating, generally, the controls evaluated are adequate, appropriate, and effective and the risks associated, but I will say the risks associated with the findings are more than inconsequential. And for an area to receive the ineffective rating, in my opinion, the controls evaluated are not adequate, appropriate, or effective and urgent corrective action is necessary. At this point, I'll be happy to answer your questions.
I'm assuming that an ineffective rating, things would come to the board sort of as the audit is in progress, not after the completion of a report?
Yeah, that would be the idea and also it would come to management's attention, too. That's not something I would wait a month to tell anybody. If it's something that definitely falls in the ineffective area, that would definitely come to the board sooner than the presentation. And actually, for this audit, even the areas that I had improvement needed, I had already spoken with management well in advance of preparing the written report.
That was my next question. Other questions? Mr. Chasman?
The prevailing wage finding. You talk about improvement needed and there's a recommendation that you make and then a management's response. And one of you could talk about whether or not you believe that responses is going to solve that issue, solve that problem, or whether more needs to be done?
As far as my recommendation, I do recommend that, just due to the complexity of the whole prevailing wage issue, that even though I do recognize in my report that new procedures have been implemented, I would recommend the district take a second look and get management either do additional research or seek a legal opinion to determine if what they are doing is adequately addressing the requirements of state statute and regulations.
So is this in addition to what the management's response was, what you've got in your report?
That was my recommendation. Management's response, I don't have that in front of me. That might be a question either Mr. Chodas could answer or...
And a question that kind of follows up on that. In terms of these findings that are either ineffective or improvement needed, do you have some idea of how that would be reported back to us in some future meeting or some future document to say, you know, we've, the administration has addressed this and I now believe it's effective?
Yeah, the idea is to, somewhere down the road, either later this fiscal year or early next, I would take a look at these issues and see if I still had concerns. I know in most of the management's responses, they've already addressed almost all of my recommendations. So that would be pretty easy to go back and look at, but for the ones that are still in progress, I would look at those again. But also, part of it is for management and the board to look at the management's response section together and together determine whether or not that's adequate. I can give the recommendation, but then it's up to management to either implement those recommendations or not and then it's up to the board to determine if their response is enough or not.
And I guess my question is, I want to make sure that recommendations you've made and that management's responded to, that somehow comes back to the board that, hey, that's been followed through with and I'm okay with it or you all just kind of talked about it, but nothing really happened and it's still not something that kind of meets my standards?
Yeah, there will definitely be follow-ups, yes.
Other questions?
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
It's fun to watch staff work around this issue and it's very friendly and Wayland's a perfect personality as far as dealing with these issues. So it's, relationship's really very, very good. So I need to say that Wayland's done an awesome job so far, so, okay.
And I know that some of your future work will, you won't want to talk about much until you're actually in progress and you don't want to give away any of your next direction. But one thing you'll be looking at is Superintendent's Office, spending and budget, and Board of Education, spending and budget.
Yes, and actually, I can talk about this part of it. It is part of the Audit Work Plan for 2013, so that's all public knowledge. One of the audits I was going to, I am completing and working on right now is looking at Board of Education expenditures, Superintendent's Office expenditures, and I've also added cabinet-level expenditures as well as part of that same audit. So that one is ongoing right now.
Thank you very much. Our ongoing systems review, Dr. Goodman, I think we have four tonight.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to bring to you this month's ongoing systems review for programs reviewed in the month of January by the Cabinet for this February meeting. From the perspective of programs to date, this reflects the third round, the third batch of ongoing systems review that have been brought forward. The previous month's programs are provided for you as a reminder of systems that have come through. We will have additionally three more months to bring through Cabinet, which subsequently will come to the board as well. So we're nearing the halfway point from the full docket of programs. This month, we have four programs: Custodial Services, School Police, Counseling Services, and Human Resources. And it is customary at this point, with this being our third round through, we will present the OSR summary page. The program leader will join me at the podium. I'll answer any technical questions that may come through. As far as the product or the process, the program leader will be here to answer any questions you may have. And then we will close with a plus delta on both process and product at that time. So to begin with, we will begin with Custodial Services and I'll ask Mr. Rod Owen, manager of that program, to join me at this time.
Questions, Mr. Owen or Dr. Goodman?
I was recalling the last time you were here presenting your program, you had a video on some robots that were cleaning the floor.
Yes.
How's that going?
Robots still need work. It didn't pass the quality that we're looking for and the reliability, it wouldn't run. We still had too much operator interaction to be able to deal with it. It will be part of the future in the cleaning business. Robots need a little work, yeah, in each direction.
I was certainly interested in that your report kind of echoes what we're seeing and the reason where we've added a levy on to the current bond project list is that if we do more and build more, it somehow costs more to take care of it. And it makes perfect sense. Good. Thank you very much. Let off easy.
Wait right here, one second. While Mr. Owen is with me, I would like to acknowledge, he was one of the team members that actually was involved in the program evaluation redesign, part of this process. So it was the two of us along with Ms. Jennifer Reniger, who was a curriculum facilitator in math at the time. So I would like to publicly acknowledge Mr. Owen for his work in this process as well. He was instrumental in getting to where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Next program will be School Police and joining me will be Mr. Tom Tucker.
Questions for Mr. Tucker? Can't let him off this easy. Mr. Lee?
Well, I can't go without at least having the discussion from a safety standpoint. There's just been too much going on with respect to that and with respect to, I'm getting ahead of myself, stuff that's going on in the legislature with gun control and disarm the teachers, let's do this, let's do that. And I guess I'm more coming from the standpoint of preparedness for staff in your role from the standpoint of school resource, of training, emergency preparedness. It's the best way, I don't know, better term to do it, but there's a lot of others, different things. And I noticed that... Yeah, and so I was, yeah, one of the items there was...
I have three.
About the three.
The Alice program.
My glasses. Yeah. And I guess talk a little bit more about that and then I have a follow-up question with respect to resource officers in general as far as staffing and numbers and just in general as we move forward.
Excuse me, are you referring to the Alice program specifically? Okay. The Alice program is a program that was put together by a police officer whose wife was an elementary school principal down in Texas. And the program, what it does, it helps expand on the lockdown. You know, we've been doing lockdowns the same way since Columbine, basically. And that's where we lock the door, turn the lights off, go hunker down in the corner, get out of line of sight, and hope the bad guy passes by and those kind of things. With the Alice program, it's going to allow us to have some different options. ALICE actually stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. And we're going to try to provide more information to our buildings as far as the lockdown. Right now, we're definitely discouraging any code words, those kind of things. But we talk about a lockdown, just so it may, the announcement may be lockdown, lockdown, or lockdown drilled now, lock all your doors. Well, that doesn't tell us much, but if we move on and use some of the verbiage and stuff in the Alice program, talks about, we want to make sure everybody knows what's going on. So it may be, we have an angry parent who's out of control in the main office, lockdown, lockdown. Well, that tells you a lot more about what's going on and where it's going on. Or it might be, heaven forbid, an armed intruder in the office. Well, and so that gives more information out to the rest of the building and then we start empowering our teachers based on the rest of the program, on some things they might be able to do, to the point of even evacuating the building if they're far enough and feel safe enough, being away from the main part of the problem. And it's a program that, we have three instructors. We've been going around and teaching some of the classes now, some of the programs to some of our schools and stuff. And it's opened some eyes, it's a little different situation. It also teaches, you know, you can barricade the doors and try to prevent that person from coming in your room, tying off the doors and just making sure that, you know, you can kind of barricade. And, you know, we don't tell our staff or our students, we don't empower them to the fact that if it's for their survival, they can even break out a window and escape out the window if that's possible or, you know, if that's what they feel like is necessary. But yet, we have not talked about that, not shared that with staff, that that might be an option. Because basically, what we're talking about is the survival of our staff members and our students and what will be the outcome of an event that maybe become very horrific. Right now, our lockdown procedure is when we lock down the whole building, in effect, we're locking all of the targets in the building. And if you have 25 people in the main office where the problem might be, then those 25 people are affected naturally. But then also by locking the rest of the building, if there's 350 more people, you've given them 350 more targets in the building. So empowering our staff to make good, sound decisions and giving them the information they need to make those.
And it was more, I just think it's important for the public and everybody to know our kids are safe, schools are a safe place for kids. Weird things happen, horrible things do happen, but still, you know, school is one of the, if not maybe the safest place for many kids.
Yes.
Better than home, better than other places that's there. So I just, and I appreciate your explaining that whole preparedness. I think that's important as we talk of just the what-ifs is really important.
Other question? Dr. Frederick?
First of all, I want to thank you for being here. It always makes me feel so much safer to look back and see both of you back there. But one other thing that I noticed is that you have in your KMS summary, enhanced visibility at dismissal at the five high schools and you have the ratio of officers, students. So you have, that's in the yellow, which you are asking for additional officers to help improve, you know, improve that. How do you think this compares to the last time, whenever you brought a program evaluation forward? And at that time, you know, you mentioned that need for increased visibility at dismissal. And having been a high school science teacher, I understand that need for increased visibility at dismissal. So how do you think you're doing, that we're doing now compared to the last program evaluation when you mentioned that as a concern?
The last program evaluation, we had only been in the process of having an additional officer, a patrol officer from another site going to a high school at dismissal. And I think it was kind of interesting, we at first slowed down because another set of eyes that are mobile in the area at dismissal and stuff, kind of slowed things down and things like that. But now, I'm also thinking that this other set of eyes is seeing more things and we're able to handle things. At the end of the day, we can take them back into the principals and they can handle it and it'll be done with. And that way, we don't have to wait till it blows up in social media overnight and all the problems and, you know, all that kind of stuff going on and it'll come back to school the next morning to be played out there. So I think, I think we're doing a better job. Right now, what I have done is basically have two officers assigned to each high school. The second officer is a patrol officer and they are there about 65 to 70% of their time. The rest of the time, they're out checking on elementary schools and middle schools and answering calls for service in other buildings and stuff like that. But I think, you know, better supervision you have. I mean, our campuses are huge as far as our high schools and that's part of the problem. I mean, you're talking one, you know, 12 to 16, 1800 kids at one location. Then you throw in the aspect that we have a lot of young drivers and we have the parents there to pick up kids and it just kind of becomes a recipe for disaster if you're not careful. I mean, it's hard for me to hold my breath that long every afternoon at dismissal.
Chasman?
Do we have any comparative numbers from some of our cohorts in terms of school resource officers and the numbers and what's kind of normal for schools of our size?
Are you talking other school districts? No, sir, not really, and...
Is that data that would be useful?
Pardon me?
That data that would be useful?
It would be, but it might also be hard to get our hands on because we can certainly find schools that same size as our high schools and those kind of things. But because of our makeup, because we actually work for the school system, it'd be a little different because most schools don't employ their own SROs or they may have a partial share of their salaries and stuff with the local law enforcement agency, whether it be a police department or a sheriff's office and those kind of things. So it's not quite the same.
Tom, you might speak about the idea of a commission force.
Okay. Okay, yes, we're, there's Blue Springs, Missouri. They have a police force that is commissioned actually by, excuse me, by Blue Springs School Board. There's House Bill 152 that is now working its way through also about allowing school districts to commission their own officers. But here in Springfield, we're actually commissioned as a Green County Deputy Sheriff through the sheriff's office. We work closely not only with Jim or not, his folks, but we also work very closely with Paul Williams and SPD. But with our commissioned police officers that we have, you know, like I say, we're employed by the school district, so it's a little different situation than most have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
That's Tom's going. Tom gave a great presentation to Downtown Rotary today. Tom and Dr. Harrow was well-received, very, very good job.
Next joining me will be Mrs. Rhonda Mammon with Counseling Services.
Questions for Mrs. Mammon, comment?
Just a comment, maybe a question as well. It's kind of interesting that you have School Police Services and then Counseling. And it really is almost like one, they're kind of symbiotic in that you squeeze one and then the other one's got to pick up the slack. And you squeeze Counseling, then School Police Officer's got to pick up the slack with kids that need that help. Question, and I asked this Rhonda of you in an email when I read your report. In going through this, one of the thoughts that I kind of had was that there seems to be this, in some ways, a big difference between guidance and counseling, that in a lot of ways, the counselor is doing a job that's completely different than somebody that's looking for career readiness or college or what have you. And we've kind of lumped them together and you gave a very, a good answer to my question, but I still kind of struggle with whether or not we need to kind of explore whether there should be a separation of those duties and job descriptions. I don't know if you want to touch on that again or...
Well, I do think there is a role in the schools for more. And I talked about the idea of having a comprehensive program. Guidance and Counseling is a program, it's not a person. And I explained that to you and the components of it, it's more comprehensive. It includes both prevention and intervention, which is a requirement of DESI, you know, that we implement in our district, the Comprehensive Guidance Program. So, you know, there can be, I mean, there obviously is a need for personnel to work with students, early intervention in crisis situation as well as prevention activities. And you can, and that can look a lot of different ways. In the past, we've had school-based clinicians when we partnered, when we had the Safe Schools, Healthy Students grant. For several years, we had case managers, social workers, and then therapists that were actually in the schools and they provided a very valuable service in addition to what school counselors do. And since losing those positions, the school counselors then have had to take on a lot more responsibility in the area. They are trained to do individual counseling as well as provide services to help them in academic issues, career development, and all of those. That's a school counseling degree. You know, they can go a lot of different directions with that. So, you know, in answering your question, I think that my job is to, you know, really make sure that we're implementing a full, comprehensive program in the best way that we can. And so obviously, I support addition of school counselors because we can then really focus in on the prevention services, which in the long run will help us down the road. We don't have to provide as many Band-Aid services in crisis situation if we can get to them early.
Well, in looking at your red items and yellow items on your KSM summary, it's pretty obvious, I think, to the board that it's all budget-related. And no surprise... And no surprise. Mr. Lee.
Can you talk, and you may not have all the answers because this is something on next steps, but the, the second item under next steps about reducing the amount of time spent in system support, can, kind of what, what are you talking about there? Or, or what? I know you don't have answers necessarily, but what?
Our, our counselors, DESI gives us some guidelines of where we need to fall in terms of percentage of time, and system support should be falling somewhere in between ten to fifteen percent. And what that means are like committee meetings, working with different building level responsibilities that everyone who works in a school district has. But it's, again, it takes them away from the work, direct services to students. So our goal is, in some areas in many of our schools, they're spending more time in system support, less time to work with individual students. So the goal is to get that down to where we fall into what DESI recommends that we be.
I, I wouldn't, sure if I exactly understood what system support mean, but that, okay.
It's needed, but it's, I mean, it's something we have to do.
Non-student contact.
Yeah.
Ms. Callen.
A question about the FAFSA. Is that self-reported? How, how do you know if a family has filled that out? Does that information come back to the district? Or, because having filled out a few of those over the past few years, I don't ever recall having to say what, you know, our home district is on that. So how would you know if a family had filled that out or not?
There is a, a match to that. In, in the past, we've been able to get just general percentages of how many of our district students have completed the FAFSA. They get that by either, and, and I'm not really clear how they get the data of where that comes from, but we have gotten a report from the Department of Education that says we have forty-six point six percent of our district students who completed the FAFSA. It may be coming from the universities because the universities know where the students are coming from. So that may be where the data's coming from. I'm not real sure about that. But as of this year, we are participating in the Department of Education FAFSA Completion Project. We're one of eighty-one districts who, in the country, that were chosen to be a pilot for this. And what, what the goal is for this project is not only to increase our participation in the number of students, families that complete that, because the research has shown that the more students that actually go through that step and have access to that, get information about it, actually go on to post-secondary education. And that does not mean, as you know, a four-year university necessarily, we're talking about any kind of post-secondary training. And again, the goal is not, it's to create that college-going culture district-wide in the schools that have, it started in Chicago, and they saw a tremendous increase in their, their first-generation lower-income families that actually did go on and do, and take that next step and going on to, to do that. So our goal, we now are getting, we, and I think, I, I hope you got the information earlier this year about, we, we have three of our schools that are part of the pilot project, which means that we have had to upload a file that has our senior names on it, all of our seniors. And, and parents were given the, a letter, the opportunity to opt out of that if they chose not to. We only send directory information, and then they match, they send a match, and monthly they send us a report of the number of completions or non-completions. And it gives us the stages that they're in, has it been submitted and not completed or completed, and they have their estimated family contribution. We don't get any of the financial information, we only get that little code that says, you know, whether or not they've completed it, which gives the counselors then the opportunity to follow up with students that are either in process or have not started. And the hope is that it'll encourage more students to at least look at college access for the future.
Do our counselors have training in filling out the FAFSA?
Some do more than others, some are more knowledgeable about it.
It's a pretty intimidating form.
It, it is, but it's really, it's almost gotten to the point where it's so simple, you don't believe it's so simple. I mean, you know, it's the kind of thing, but it is just maneuvering the system, and we are in the process of that now. We, we're pulling in some other help with that from the colleges and universities. We have our, our big event coming up next weekend for the FAFSA Frenzy that all of the schools are participating in, where there will be individual help with that, as well as there will be some volunteers that are tax professionals. So if families have not completed their tax forms, they can get that help too. And then some of the schools then are doing individual events, evenings where they open their computer labs later on this spring.
That's fantastic. I, yeah, I've noticed the visibility over the last couple of years has been, you know, much greater, and I think that's, I think that's fantastic because I think you're right. Depending on whether parents have had exposure to those kinds of forms in the past, or, or the need to fill that out to, to receive financial aid themselves, it can be a very intimidating process to go through. And, and a bit, you know, wondering why are they asking me all these, you know, pretty personal questions too, and where's this information going? So I'm really glad to see that emphasis, but I was just kind of curious of how that got reported back to us. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
You.
Thank you, Rhonda.
And our final program this evening will be Human Resources, and Parker McKenna will be joining me.
Questions? Dr. Frederick.
On your key opportunities for improvement, you talk about controllable absence percentages, and then your next steps to collaborate, to better define the reason for control. Can you define controllable absences? And then if you do define the reason for what, through collaboration, what would be a way to resolve that?
Sure. Well, one of the reasons this has just recently been identified is the data's just recently become available to us. We've done some work to better narrow the way that we define absences in the district through Kelly Educational Staffing, who tracks the district's absences for us. A controllable absence is, you know, as you might suspect from its name, by definition, something that we feel like we can control. So that's professional development absences, school business absences, those types of things. We can control the day that they happen, we can control whether they happen at all, those types of, of issues. You know, in looking at the, the number that we have, again, we're, we're working to set a baseline there. It's, you know, the way that you slice and dice the data, you could kind of, from where you sit, determine whether or not you think it's a, an opportunity for improvement or not. I think what we're saying here is that we want to, excuse me, we want to better know, we know more about it, we want to better define exactly where those absences are coming from and how they're used. So the collaboration component would be working with people who generate those absences. Sometimes those come from the site level, sometimes they come from the district level, just so we can learn more about them, the, the reason behind them. A reason like school business can be pretty generic, and so really kind of tailoring that more to determine what the, the root cause is for that absence.
So just to follow up, so with controllable absence, it would mostly professional development?
I, I think it would probably be accurate to say it's probably a fifty-fifty split between school business and professional development, and then there's a slice of the pie that's very narrow, that's a few small reason codes.
So it could be site, PD?
It could be site, PD, it could be a teacher doing a special project with a, a budget behind it. It could be such a wide variety of things, and that's one of the issues that we want to set out to try to learn more about in that process.
That might not necessarily be a bad thing, that might be part of why we have such excellent, highly qualified teachers and administration.
It might be, that's correct.
Thank you, Parker.
As has become customary with our process, we'll close with feedback from a plus delta perspective in terms of the summary report and the process itself regarding presentation. And I would give a disclaimer that I recognize we had a little trouble with the Excel side on the commentary. We've thrown this process in, and then we also did a website change as well. And so we had a lot of moving parts. We accept responsibility for why that didn't work, we're looking to find a solution for it, we think we have one. So hopefully that will not be a problem going forward, so I'll own that one right out of the gate.
I mean, I, I think, I think as your staff is probably getting more comfortable, I think we're getting more comfortable with it. At first, we felt like it was overwhelming amount of data, at least I did. I'm certainly feeling like I've got a better handle on it now and, and maybe know what to look for a little bit better. I don't know if other board members are feeling the same, if we need to make any other adjustments?
I, I, I think one thing that I, and I've said this before, but, but a kind of uniformity of language and, and tense and, and just to make sure that we're, we're kind of uniform across all of these different things that make it easier for me in terms of, you know, the, the key strengths, the opportunities for improvement. I think if we keep those uniform and, and watch the language on that, I, I would appreciate it.
What's exciting for Cabinet is that we're seeing some really strong systems, looks, good alignment, good integration, more integration occurring more and more as we discover things as Cabinet. So that's been exciting news for us, we're getting more informed as well, so it's a good thing.
I think you'll see us coming back during budget time, saying, wait a minute, so-and-so said they didn't need this, and so-and-so didn't need this, and I think it's going to be a big help for us.
Yeah, we're getting ready for that.
Good.
I guess, is there, is, I think we've talked about this before, but is there going to be some sort of tally sheet or summary kind of? I think, well, yeah, that might, well, that might be helpful to see in the budgetary implications of, you know, reporting, you know, kind of a snapshot, so we don't have to go back through all these things. I think it'd be nice to have that in one place of what the budgetary implications of each of these reports has been.
Would that be in process or just at the end of the cycle? I mean, I'd imagine we could chunk it by month, or?
Budget time is fine, I mean, getting it, getting it then would be fine with me, but...
We're still going to be reviewing it at that time, so right at budget time.
But just to have it all in one place, I think, would be a helpful thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Treasurer report, Mr. Chodas.
If you'll open up the attachment and turn to the financial statement, for the first time in, in quite a while, you'll see that the year-to-date revenue percentage has fallen behind the prior year, seventy-one point seven-nine percent to seventy-three point seven-four percent. I'd like to assure the board that that's a, a timing difference. Last year in January, you'll see on the line titled Total County Revenue that we received about one point three million dollars in January, and this year, that same line item is showing a zero. We have received that payment in February, and I'm pleased to say that it came in about twenty thousand dollars higher than budget, so pretty much right at budget. Also contributing to the revenue percentage being lower is the fact that we increased both the revenue and expenditures for the Healthy Place to Play Initiative. So we increased the revenue about three million and the expenditures about three million. The expenditures have hit, the revenue has not yet hit, so that's also contributing. But the revenue will hit prior to the end of the year. For sales tax for the month, we're up about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Sales tax continues to come in good. On the property tax, you'll see that we're up about a little over three million dollars over last year at this time. The budget did anticipate being up about two point three million, so we are tracking better than, than we were last year. But we still have one more fairly sizable payment in February, so I'll be reporting next month on that. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Chodas. If not, I would take a motion that we approve the treasurer's report as presented. Mrs. Twitty, seconded by, by Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. It's my fault.
He kept looking at everybody else's.
Yeah. Thank you, sorry. There are some routine action items as presented that the board may approve, the minutes and personnel and contracts. I'll take a motion for that.
Move.
Mr. Renner, seconded by Dr. Frederick.
Is this where all the change orders were listed?
Yeah, they'd be under contracts.
Yeah, could I just ask a question?
Sure. Ms. Callen has a question.
I did notice that there were a significant number of change orders listed. Is this the result of the internal auditor's recommendation that we more consist, well, that all change orders be listed, or? Okay. I just noticed that there were a lot more than normal.
We have several general, general consent items that are listed. As we look through these, I'll take a motion to submit the, to approve them as submitted. You'll notice that number nine point oh-five is the Robertson Community School Continuous Learning Calendar. And again, we have good representation from Robertson, and, and thank you all for all the work you've done on this. We're, I think we're anxious to vote this one in. Not that I want to influence anybody's vote. I'll take a motion to, to approve these as submitted.
No pressure.
Mrs. Callen?
Second.
Mr. Lee. And again, thank you all for, for, not just for being here, but for doing everything. Two information items that you can see listed, one was the board, the bond compliance annual update, and the other was sample ballot, we saw those last time. I don't think we have any comments from the public, do we, Ms. Luton? Legislative report, I'm sure there's a lot to talk about.
I'll start. House Bill 388, they're trying to adjust it as far as the grades for, for school sites. And of course, everybody's MSBA, MASAA, MSTAA, MNEA are all against it, are opposed to it, but they keep coming back. And the reason that they're proposing it is it keeps things simpler. Of course, oppose it, meaning people that are continuing to bring it up. And then people that are opposing it are just simply saying, here, here's another opportunity for people to provide blame or, and outside system coming in to tell Missouri how to run its system. So anyway, I, I do not sense strong support, but you never know. And so that's where that is. Anything else to add on that one?
It's being heard in committee tomorrow. So there will be some discussion tomorrow morning concerning it, and I know there's a lot of potential modifications and amendments to it to try to not make it quite as punitive nor one-letter grade. I mean, if, if they would see what we do with our ongoing systems review and do something like that, what a great thing. But it's already there, the information is there, it's just making it displayed easier. So I, I don't know, it's, the intent is not to help schools. So.
Ms. Twitty.
Would it be smart of us to, when those kinds of pieces come out in the paper and question, and everybody's throwing in their opinion about this, at times, for lack of a better word, to answer them, but at least to state?
Position?
At least state our position, and also, just like Jerry mentioned, the OSRs that, that have been developed and the way in which they've been developed, so that it's not, it, it's not that we're not focused on these types of things, but, but we know what we're doing here, and maybe we need to be reminding.
We, we in fact had a conversation, Jared, and Mr. Lee and I, as well as other people within the system about responding to this very bill along that same line. And so we're in the middle of that conversation right now, because we think there is possibly an opportunity, we may be too late for this, possibly an opportunity for us to bring us, you know, system-type of thinking into that whole picture.
Well, I'm, I'm not thinking about the legislation as much as I'm thinking about the local influence.
Communication.
Because there's... Because there's been several things in the paper recently, and I think that it might be an opportunity for us to do maybe guest editorial or something that could provide the facts.
Sure.
Confuses with facts. What else?
Well, the Medicaid is really a critical issue, and I think this is something that is going to get a lot of, lot of, I think what's interesting about Medicaid is the senators are all saying, you know, I may support it, but they don't want to get out in front of it. And that includes Ron Richards, Jay Wasson, Bob Dixon, Parsons, and then really locally, Lincoln Huff is about the only one that really comes out and supports Medicaid. And other than that, everybody's not saying no, but they just don't want to make that commitment. That's pretty much what I pick up on that.
And if it doesn't go, the budget's history.
Yeah, now with that, I think...
The governor's budget's history, and, I mean, it's all predicated on that going through, so that's the huge elephant in the room.
Well, I also think, I also think small, smaller communities are really going to struggle because of that, because they're going to lose a lot of their local medical opportunities, their clinics and hospitals. But anyway, to me, that's a critical piece right now. I don't know what's happening with tax credits, anything updated on that, I'm not hearing much on that. It's kind of started, big noise, and it's kind of...
Everybody's talking about it, but nobody's doing much about it.
Same thing as Medicaid.
Yep. The hearing on a Tabor bill, wasn't there? Another Tabor, last week, wasn't it? Tabor bill, I didn't go to that one.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that's going to go anywhere, at least that's what I'm hearing.
Are you done?
Yeah, I am finished, yes.
Several items. One is, and before I get to what, it's really interesting process to watch the Senate this year, which is functioning incredibly efficient, getting along, getting things passed, everybody's working in the same, trying to accomplish stuff, they've passed bills already way before, and I think the House has even addressed five. So it's amazing compared to last year, the Senate is really functioning very, very well. Whether you, I'm not saying you always agree with everything they're doing, but they're working very effectively this year compared to last year, which is a good thing for us. That's where some of the sanity comes in, when it gets up to the Senate. But I guess specifically, we had 300 and, right at 300 board members converge on Jeff today for our MSBA legislative forum, extremely successful, a lot of comment. We, we heard not only from our legislative leaders, including Representative Cookson, who's chair of the House Committee, and David Pierce, who's chairman of the Senate Committee, and the Commissioner, Commissioner Castro. Everybody was pretty much guarded about not making any commitment with the budget or knowing what's going to happen. I'll mention some of the specific bills that were out there before, but we also heard from Steve Yocum, who is the PSRS Executive Director on school retirement system, and we talked about the issues that they're dealing with. Compared to other states, we're doing pretty good, but, you know, certainly there's concerns there, and they've got some bills that are out there to take care of some provisions that have expired last year. Jim Moody talked about the tax credits, and, and everybody keeps talking about the positive stuff about our budget, and things are looking better and all that, and I think the thing to keep in mind is we are still behind 2008. We are still six years behind revenue in 2014, best case. Best case 2014, we're still under 2008 revenues. So as good as we talk about things turning around, we still are way, way behind, and which to the tune of about $600 million underfunded for that formula. So I don't know the answer to that.
We have a levy that we're looking at.
That's right. And as we say, everything's getting pushed locally, and, and so that, that's the direction. Couple of specific things, the sunshine law on emergency plans is passed through the House, it's passed through the Senate. House is very clean, the Senate's has kind of, it's got some problems with it, but hopefully that'll get resolved soon. Overall, I think it's, I mean, it's got to be done, so we'll get there. Norm talked about 388, there's another one, and I don't know how much Norm heard about this one, but the graduation requirements.
Oh, yeah.
There's a provision out there that's, that's out there to require students to take their, in their last two semesters, they have to take two, let's let me make sure I get it right, two science and two maths in their last two, two semesters. And the thought is, I guess somebody in their infinite wisdom thinks seniors are getting an easy road with classes, and so I guess the higher eds are complaining about the math and science.
I think it's remedied, yeah.
And so where that will go, I don't know, but there's a, it's got everybody stirred up about that, as far as requiring students to do that. There's another one out there that's kind of like that one, it's differentiated diplomas that's being kicked around with respect to, for a student to graduate with a state-accredited diploma, state-approved diploma, they've got to have passed proficiency or advanced in all four of the core subjects. If they don't, they get a quote "local certificate."
Oh, versus the state.
Versus the state-approved.
I'd rather have a local.
You know, I, I don't anticipate a whole lot, but I mean, it's got everybody stirred up about having differentiated diplomas up there, so. Desi Bill's out there, there's also a bill on apparent trigger.
Right.
Or they don't call apparent trigger, they call it parent empowerment. It's all in semantics, concerning where if you got a bottom 20% of your stu, if you're in the bottom 20% of schools' performance, the majority of the parents sign a petition, they can take over the school. Love parents, not sure that's what you want to do.
They get to pay for it, then?
Yeah, I don't know about that. I, I don't know that that will go anywhere, all the legislators said today. That's never been proven, that's never been supported anywhere that it works, but they keep throwing it out for the sake of issues.
Jerry, are these hopping out of?
It's all outside coming in. No, it's outside.
They're actually having these, anybody having?
Yeah, like Rex Singfeld.
Bottom line, none of these have anything to do with education, it has to do with ideology, period. Nothing to do with improving kids' education, nothing to do with improving schools, nothing to do with improving public education. It has to do with starving the beast, and that's public education and government. And so it's not coming within, it's coming from outside, and it's frustrating. And so, and I had a thought that I was going to say, and I can't remember what it was now. Senior moment. Okay. Too much stuff. Two things I was going to bring up, and I, you have a copy of it, I think Ms. Luton passed out, the MSBA legislative platform. I would love for you guys to, for the board to take a look at that. If there's anything that concerns you or concerns questions or thoughts or things we need to change, please let me know. We'll have an opportunity this June to revise our platform as MSBA. If you're concerned about it, you'll have to go to the delegate assembly and all that, but if you've got something that you would like to see, I'd give you an opportunity to provide input, so please let me know to do that. The other thing I wanted to talk a little bit, I won't take much long, because I don't think it's, it's an issue, but it's not pressing right at the moment, and Dr. Frater, however you may want to handle this, but one of the things that's moving in, on the national level from an NSBA standpoint is NSBA's proposing a bill to change, not change, I'm sorry, basically it's a local control bill, which it's trying to rein in, Arnie Duncan and the Department of Education of running rampant with policies, regulations that are not, have any oversight whatsoever from Congress. As opposed to administering policies and regulations and stuff, they're creating policies and regulations, which is totally different from what should be happening. So may come back, I don't think there's any pressing thing like within the next week or so, but the possibility of if we would want to support that bill, and I only have a draft, so I don't want to hand out a draft yet, I just got a draft of it, so I don't want to do it until it's published, but we may want to send a copy, a letter to our delegation, just say of support of this. But it's something that needs to happen, they need to get reeled in so they don't run quite so rampant with respect to policies and new programs, whether it's Race to the Top, grants, competitive stuff, something needs to happen to do that. Last thing, on March 5th, is Region 10's School Board Advocacy Network, we have a board meeting, we will be done in time to come back for the board meeting, we'll be done that afternoon in time. I already checked all that, because that was going to really screw things up. So it's like at 10 o'clock till 2 o'clock, we'd have time to get back, so if anybody wants to go, it's up there and back, meet with our legislators, spend some time talking about the issues, and then going over and talking to them, and those meetings will be set up for us to do that. So if you're interested, March 5th.
So let you know, you coordinate.
Let me know, and we can coordinate that, so we can get that done. So a lot of activity, there's, I think there's been 850 bills filed so far, 350 of them have impact on education in some fashion, so the lobbyist and Jeff are busy.
With the board's permission, if you'll keep us updated on that NSBA issue, and then if we need to bring it to the board for discussion and vote to support, we can do that.
I, I thought it was going to be filed before today, and it wasn't, so.
Good. Future issues.
Got two things.
Sure.
We'll be bringing Glendale's swimming team.
Good.
Here, as soon as we can get them out of the clouds.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, exciting for them to win the state championship, as well as Glendale's culinary arts, which is awesome, and bringing them as well.
Jesus, so they fix our dinner.
Maybe they fix our dinner one night.
Oh, maybe, oh, oh, that's, I don't know if I want to go that far, okay, I'll, I'll...
Oh, absolutely.
I'll ask them, I'll see what they say, yeah. Hamburgers and dogs, but anyway, the, but they'll come up with something fancy, I'm sure. They'll come up with something fancy, I'm sure.
They want their championship.
Anyway, I want to bring that to, just to remind everybody, and we'll be bringing those, those students to, to the table here.
And Dr. Harold, if you can make sure Mr. Whitelaw gets here for that, too, that'd be good. Yes, Ms. Callen?
I just have a question, it kind of goes back to what Mrs. Twitty was saying about just presenting facts. I know there was something in the paper, on the editorial page yesterday, I'm just kind of curious, and I didn't bring this to the administration's attention before today, so I wouldn't expect an answer, but if somebody wanted to transfer in an elementary school setting, would there be openings right now in the district? Okay.
It would depend on school and the grade level.
Okay, but...
Numbers are a problem, but, you know, as far as schools, we have four.
But depending on if you're a third grader, there would be an opening at a different third grade someplace in the district, right?
Sure.
I just thought it was kind of interesting that somebody who lives in Nixa, is running for the Nixa School Board, is writing an op-ed piece about problems with Springfield, but then I saw who he worked for, and it explained everything, so.
I said there was no possibility of that kind of transfer.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that, and I think it's important to have those kinds of facts out in the public.
It's important who he works for.
Yeah, he works for Show Me Institute.
And Dr. Ritter and I actually met with him, what?
Year ago.
October, yeah.
Oh, maybe it was last fall.
October.
Oh, the gentleman who wrote.
Right, with one of his, with one of the board members of the Show Me Institute, who's local.
That's right.
And, and kind of attempted to explain our quality and what's driving our quality and all that, I'm, I'm not sure he was willing to listen to it.
Yep, yep, that's about right.
Okay.
Another, don't confuse me with the facts.
Don't confuse me with the facts. Other future issues, I think we're on for our first budget meeting on the 19th of March at 4 o'clock here, preceding the March 19th board meeting, so I don't know if anything's gone out on that, but make sure you keep that on your calendars. Other issues. Staff can't, can't try to influence votes on the bond and levy campaign in April, volunteer school board members can, and so again, I'll challenge board and staff to send in your envelope and wear a pin, I know we've got, board members are giving quite a few presentations.
There's a face.
Facebook page?
That's leading it now.
Yes.
I can't tell you.
Okay. Matt Gifford and his wife, Matt of the manager of the Springfield Cardinals, and his wife who teaches at one of our schools.
Oh, she doesn't teach?
Doesn't teach, doesn't teach. But she's, and she's been very involved in our local schools, are the, the head of the campaign for the quality schools for kids, and I think that'll be a great, a great person to have as our public leader. And anyone that knows of a entity that would like a presentation on it, we'll get the dog and pony show going. Financial operations report is filed for your review. You can do your plus deltas, we do need to go into executive session, so I'll take a motion to the board and meet in executive session to discuss real estate and personnel matters as provided in Section 610021, 2, 3, and 13. Mrs. Callen?
Second.
By Mrs. Twitty.
Steve, you'll be first. I saw it, hey, Steve will be first.